You think this is bad? It's the guy at Green Park, Bob Smith. And he does it if you're not, if you're not on guard, he just starts up and everybody jumps out of the seat, even if you're waiting on it. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. So we'll call our meeting to order as I just did. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Here.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Councilmember Pogankord? Mayor Protem Davies?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Pogankord is absent tonight. Thank you.
Okay, if you please stand. I have our implication for Pastor Mike Stafford from the Vineyard Church. Good evening, Pastor.
Sorry for the casual attire.
It is absolutely fine. We like it.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for having me. Can we pray together?
Yes.
Father, we come before you tonight, and we humbly ask for your wisdom and your grace that our civil servants, Lord, here that lead in our city would have your heart for your city and your people. We're so grateful for all that you're doing, Lord, in South Kern County, the beautiful city of Tehachapi. Thank you, Lord, for what we celebrated down at K-Cog the other night, just all the humanitarian and otherly acts happening all throughout Kern County. We ask for more of that.
Yes.
And, Lord, we're just so grateful for your kindness toward us. These last two years have been full of so many undulations, so much difficulty. Thank you, Lord, for the wisdom and the leadership you've given our city. We're grateful. We ask for your continued kindness toward Greg, toward our mayor, toward the City Council, toward our first responders, Chief Kent and the Police Department, our Fire Department. Thank you, Lord, for the way that you've stewarded this season, and we're just so grateful for your kindness. We ask for more, and we just give you thanks tonight. And we pray these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Michael, would you lead us into pledge? Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is the consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered routine and non-controversial, but if anyone in the audience or the council would like to have something removed for separate discussion, I just indicate and we'll remove it. If anyone in the audience wants something removed from consent that you'd like to take separately? Counsel?
No.
Do you have a motion to approve consent as presented?
I'll make that motion, Mayor, that we accept the consent.
Counselor?
That's presented.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. I have a, the next item is our community engagement and mayor certificates. I'd like the group from Love Tehachapi. Oh, yes.
Mayor Smith, Council, I just wanted to share a few notes about the recognition we're going to give tonight.
Okay.
The city of Tehachapi nominated a volunteer group, Love Tehachapi, for recognition by the Kern Council of Governments. And last Thursday, the banquet dinner, the Kern Council of Governments gave them the recognition of merit for community involvement. And that stems, it started back in 2019, when our police chief, Chief Craig, began the Neighborhood Improvement Project. And these, this group came together as volunteers to help the chief with this project he put together, and that was the birth, I believe, of Love Tehachapi, and it's been going strong ever since. They just picked up that torch and just kept running with it, working with the chief and his code enforcement team, identifying properties that might need a little bit of extra love, you know, based on medical necessity, elderly, financial difficulty. They've adopted properties and just taken care of it without looking for any kind of recognition. So that's the kind, that's the time you want to step up and give recognition is when you get a group of volunteers. And that's what makes Tehachapi so great, is the people that live here, and this is just a great example. So we have a certificate of recognition that you've got, and we'd be honored that you presented that to Love Tehachapi.
Why don't you all come up? How many total lives in your group? Come on over here.
It varies, but we average, when the volunteers come out, at about 150 or more.
That's a whole lot, and it shows.
Yeah.
As Keith has just said, we appreciate every single thing that you do. I think the first time I saw you was at one of the North Side neighborhood cleanups. You were out there in force. We were, everyone had trucks in the weather. They wanted to scoot in. And everybody, you know, many hands make small work. What's the thing?
Light work, yeah?
Yes. But anyway, you were so much appreciated. And like I said, we were at Kern Council of Governments' Regional Awards Ceremony the other night. You had a group down there in the city. All, the entire City Council was there representing our support for your group. And that's a regional war for the county. We have one every year in March. This is the first we've had since a couple of years where the COVID, we had to postpone. But it was so nice to have that, have you folks there. We all took pictures afterwards. It was, it was really neat. So we sure really appreciate you. And this is a certificate of recognition from the city itself for Love Tehachapi. The Tehachapi City Council hereby recognizes Love Tehachapi for their continued contributions to the city of Tehachapi. Their efforts include cleanup of public spaces, neighborhoods, and providing valuable assistance to those in need. The Tehachapi City Council thanks this group of volunteers for contributing to the quality of life in our community. Thank you very, very much. Okay, we're here. Now, got it. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number two, public comment. Is there anyone that would like to bring something before the council that's not on our agenda this evening?
We do have two cards turned in.
Okay.
Ruth Ann Jennings with Have a Heart Humane Society.
Okay.
Can I go first?
Sure.
Sure.
So we have Gina Christopher with Have a Heart Humane Society.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening. I know most of you. This is a trailer to the team. Through Have a Heart was a wonderful donation. My name is Gina Christopher. I live in Oak Knoll, so I have, or been a resident of Tehachapi since 1985. You might call me a long-timer. For the last 12 years, I have run Have a Heart Humane Society and Rescue Treasures Resale Store that funds our low-cost spay and neuter clinics. Also, Zach Scrivner, my friend, appointed me to Kern County Animal Services Advisory Commission Board in September of 2019 because he knows how much my organization believes in the importance of spaying and neutering. I believe, much like Nick Cullen, the director of KCAS, that if you provide low-cost spay and neuter services, most people will do the right thing and have their pets fixed. COVID-19 has sent the community cat population into a tailspin. A little bit of intended pun there. The two veterinary hospitals in Tehachapi all but shut down during COVID and have raised their prices to almost $200 to spay a female cat and will book an appointment three months out. Cats go into heat and give birth within 60 days. 60 days. If someone sees a feral or community cat in their neighborhood, they are unlikely to spend $200 or drive to Bakersfield for a more affordable solution. Kern County provides fixings of community cats for free through Critters Without Litters, however, requires two trips to Bakersfield, one to drop the cat off, and then you have to go the next day to pick the cat up. With the price of gas at $5 a gallon, this is no longer an option for Tehachapi residents. Have a Heart Humane Society works tirelessly to help with the overpopulation of cats and dogs in our community. We have spent $65,750 just in 2021 to hire the SNIP bus for 10 clinics where approximately 60 to 70 pets are fixed at each clinic for a total of approximately 650 pets fixed in 2021. At $100 per pet on average, this is expensive, but it is the only game in town. I shudder to think of how many pets would be free-roaming Tehachapi and surrounding areas had we not worked so hard to fund these clinics. The dollar amount jumps to 165,000 if you include all the clinics we have hosted since 2018. We also adopted out approximately 220 kittens and 185 dogs in 2020. I get five to eight calls and emails a day from local residents seeking low-cost spay and neuter services and people looking to rehome kittens that just showed up on their property. I cannot possibly handle this volume of cats and kittens. KCAS will not help Tehachapi community simply because they do not get as many service calls as Tehachapi as they do other areas of the county. We are second only to Ridgecrest. Ridgecrest gets like 22 calls, and we get 48 calls, and every district in Bakersfield gets 65, 85, 100. KCAS is also not taking in owner-surrendering cats at this time and have not for the last two years. So what are Tehachapi residents supposed to do with these community cats? I am requesting the city of Tehachapi to fund two double clinics with the SNIP bus to fix community cats. With two cat-only clinics, we can expect to fix about 180 pets. The SNIP bus is based on a point system. We get 600 points for a double clinic, five points for a male cat, 10 points for a female cat. These clinics would cost the city $14,000. Community cats are a nuisance, yet it is not their fault. I'm pleading with you to help our cause in making Tehachapi a no-kill community.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ruth Ann Jennings?
I don't have much to add. That was pretty perfect. But what I wanted to ask about, or maybe remind you, is I understand that the Golden Hills, first, I'm Ruth Ann Jennings. I've been working with the rescues in Tehachapi since 2008, I think it was, I don't turn out fine. So, and I'm one of the founders of Have a Heart. But there was talk of possibly, at the Golden Hills CSD community meeting, having a, having Eastern Kern provide its shelter here in Tehachapi, which rescues then could work with that shelter in terms of controlling the animals that are loose on the street and causing havoc and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up to the top of the list, if I could. And is there any chance of the city applying for a grant for, for rescue, you know, like they do for other things? Is it possible to pull, apply for a grant to stand new to the cats and dogs that are, that need spaying and neutering here? That's all I have.
You know, we can't take action tonight because it's not on the agenda, but let's see if there's anything we can do and find out from why we're not getting support from the county? Because we, as far as the services they provided, you're saying that we don't get any services?
They won't bring the SNIP bus. They, the county will not hire the SNIP bus to come to Tehachapi.
Do they go to other places like?
They've done Boron, they do Arvin, they do Lamont religiously, and they do like Northwest Bakersfield.
Do they do Kern Valley, places like that?
Yes, they do. I don't know about the SNIP bus. They just recently hired on the SNIP bus, and they're hosting about three clinics a month, but it's all in Bakersfield.
Tehachapi seems to have a unique position in the county that we're so great up here, they just leave this to ourselves. You know, libraries, things like that, everyone else has one. You know, the state has Department of Motor Vehicle offices everywhere, but not here. You know, we've kind of left our own resources. But you know what? Could we find out if there's any other way we could get some attention from other entities that are supposed to be providing this service that we also appear paid for, correct, in our taxes? That's just my spiel, if you like.
For sure. That was a good spiel. Thank you. I want to say thank you to Have a Heart.
That is. Yes.
That is part of the solution, a big part of the solution for the city and the greater Tehachapi. So we'll start with that first. I'm going to call Zach Scrivner, our county supervisor, and Nick Cullen, and see where we stand. The city of Tehachapi actually has a contract with Kern County Animal Control for the services. And I know in the past, the SNIP bus has visited our town many, many times successfully.
Yes.
Thank you for that. I think that Supervisor Scrivner donated some of his discretionary funds for that, but I could be wrong. Nevertheless.
$5,000 for the last, like, three years.
Every little bit helps, that's for sure. And so let me do some checking, and we'll see where we can, where we can land here soon, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I would also be willing to make it, if you wanted, just for city residents. That would even be okay with me. I don't know if you've noticed, the old hospital location is riddled with feral cats.
Well, we do have an issue with residents feeding cats. Chief is very aware of that, our current person is very aware of it. It's not a healthy thing to engage in. We've had residents complain about that.
Yes.
Again, we have a contract with Kern County Animal Control, and let's look at that contract. Chief and I will look into this and see what we can bring to the table. It's never-ending when you, when you talk about that. We, you know, good communities are kind to their animals.
Yes.
That's for sure.
And it will get worse if we.
Right. And city of Tehachapi is not in the animal control business. I think we want to steer clear of that quite frequently, but we can certainly support those efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. And possibly, the other comment you made with the thought of possibly having the county have a shelter here in our, in our area, a county shelter. There's one in Mojave.
No, it's closed.
It's closed, so. The county is bare then for services.
The county has done a remarkable job, actually, over the last couple of years with Nick Cullen at the helm with the No Kill. But COVID has, like everything else, turned it upside down. But things are starting to, let's say, flatten out, and people are getting back to their, the good business they do. So let us look into this. No promises, but we'll look into it.
Well, the other thing, too, is like we had the comments a few meetings ago about support for the community orchestra. My suggestion was, let's look at all the CSDs. You know, I'd prefer it not be a city-only thing, but if we could have Golden Hills, Stallion, Bear Valley, all of us contributed something. You could get a bigger cross-section of the community, the mountaintop here, and a larger, you know, funding from more sources versus just city residents. So we'll look into all of that, whatever we can do. Okay?
Thank you.
And like you said, Zach's been very, very generous with, you know, his discretionary funds and working with us, and I'm sure that he'll, he'll work with us on this as well. So, all right. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Anyone else need to, like to come up to the podium for something not on our agenda? All right. Next item is item number, it's like five, for dispersments, bills for RSI Petroleum.
Mayor Smith, I need to recuse myself because I'm an employee of RSI Petroleum.
Is there any public comment on item number five? Bills for, pay the bills for RSI Petroleum. Counsel?
No, I'll make the motion.
We have a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 3-0 vote to authorize the dispersments and bills from RSI Petroleum with a recusal from Mayor Protem Davies.
Item number seven, conduct a public hearing to receive public testimony concerning the transit needs within the city. The city of Tehachapi provides transit services named dial-a-rides through Kern Regional Transit. And at this point, I will open the hearing and ask if there was any public or correspondence.
It was published on the Tehachapi News on January 19, and we have not received any correspondence.
All right. Your presentation. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, members of the council. The, it's an annual requirement for the city to receive TDA funds or Transportation Development Act funds to hold this public hearing and adopt a resolution stating that there are no unmet transit needs within the city. The city of Tehachapi provides a dial-a-ride transit service through Kern Regional Transit. And just to give you some statistics for last fiscal year, 2021, ridership decreased 24% and the total cost increased 17% in, pretty much from the COVID-19 pandemic. One of the requirements that the city has to satisfy is a 10% Fairbox ratio, so that's the ratio of Fairbox revenue to total expenses. Again, just this year and past years, it's very difficult for the city to achieve that 10% ratio. So typically, the city uses its general fund to subsidize that requirement. This last year, the 2021, the city was able to use CARES Act funding, about $26,000, to satisfy that 10% requirement. So adopting this resolution will enable or authorize the city manager to execute and file the claims for our TDA funding for next fiscal year. Would that all stop? Then, if there are any questions you have?
Are there any questions from the public regarding our unmet transit needs from our dial-a-ride program? From the council? All right, thank you for your presentation. I'm going to close the meeting at this point. Counsel comments?
Well, I know, I work in Mojave, and they built that transit center in Mojave, and I don't think I've ever seen anybody there, ever. And, you know, I know it's not working, but they built that beautiful thing to get people from here to there. And I know we, we've done our share here in the city, so it's, one day, hopefully, it's used. I mean, we've used all this time and energy to put this into place, and I think it's a great tool for people who need it. So once we can get back to normal with everything, hopefully, it gets back to normal pretty soon. I'd like to see it being used.
Is there anything?
No.
Christina?
I know this is a program that's necessary for us to comply with in order to receive additional funding, and the cost per ride is not anything anybody's happy about. I may have asked this in years past, but is there, is there an easy answer to the question about volume of riders that would help to make this program more self-sustaining? And I don't know if that, hate to ask the newbie. It's kind of not fair. But I just, I think because of COVID, our ridership was down. It's always way lower than we think it should be. And for those who don't know, this is something that is designed to be in place for folks that don't have other options and may need this for medical, you know, visits and things like that. But I, I'm, I've been happy, I think this is the third time I've had this conversation since I've been on the council. I'm curious if there is a volume that we hope to achieve to make this more efficient.
Well, it's a moving target of sorts. The, what we're talking about this evening is the Kern dial-a-ride as opposed to Kern Transit, which is city-to-city. So dial-a-ride within our city with the hope that there's a connection between dial-a-ride and Kern Transit. This is not unique to the city of Tehachapi. Kern is a rural community, and you would think that more people would ride the bus, let's say. But it's one of the, one size does not fit all. It's a mandate from Sacramento. When you're in large cities, vehicles are struggling because parking and, you know, the costs associated with the vehicle. So if you live in San Francisco or, or Los Angeles, these sorts of programs work well there. They don't work well in small towns. We promote it on social media. We promote it in the newspapers. We encourage every time we turn around, ride the bus. But people in Tehachapi don't ride the bus. There's some that do. Handicap, for instance, that's a great example. Councilmember Scrivner? It'll take you to the transit center that we built in the city of Tehachapi, which would take you down to Bakersfield or the Alavae, should you choose. But this is a struggle, and this is not unique to Tehachapi, and it's a necessary process. If we don't subsidize the dial-a-ride, then state funds for roads, asphalt, if you will, are held back. So it's a requirement that we must meet.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I, perhaps later, we can sync up because I, it would be nice to understand if there was a number that if we got to that, that would help us to keep this program more cost-effective. We do not have a public transportation culture here in Tehachapi, for all the reasons you stated and others. But I, that seems like it would be nice one of these years if the cost per rider wasn't the amount that I suspect it is, which is not anything we're happy about.
It's huge. You know, at one point, I had raised an issue, and I don't know if there's any discussion since, it's been several years, about, you know, providing the funds to a private entity or entities like Uber drivers. If someone needs a dial-a-ride, they could contract with the, we could pay for the Uber driver, something like that. Has any further discussion gone toward decentralizing the service versus having a driver and a bus that costs a lot of money, that you have three people on there who's the private providing the service, and now we're paying $91 a ride because we've got an empty bus?
Right, so you pay a dollar, maybe $2 for the ride. It costs the city $91 for that ride. You're right. So pre-COVID, we were working with Kern Cog. The cities in Kern are working with Kern Cog, Kern Council of Governments, to achieve that goal potentially. There were a lot of hurdles, and then COVID hit. And so once again, like the spay and neuter, it's something that needs to be worked on. So we'll contact Kern Cog and ask those questions again. The great staff there that really understands the process and the hurdles and the opportunities associated with that. So we'll do that.
I also think that, like you pointed out, a lot of times, this is for folks that need a wheelchair also transferred, and they need that lift that the vehicle does have. So there is, there is a need for this, perhaps, if we could, you know, just have more of a culture of people that utilize it. But I think COVID just threw us all into a, sort of, the trend going further in the wrong direction, but hopefully.
I think most people drive themselves, or they have friends and family that take them to a doctor's appointment, for example. You can call and make an appointment, or you can call and see if the bus is available. But it does take a large amount of time to kind of crisscross town, if you will. So it doesn't fit schedules really well. So it doesn't fit schedules really well.
The other thing is, what's the size of passenger capability for the bus that they use right now?
Well, I'm going to say pre-COVID. There were limited seating over the last couple of years, but 10 to 12, it's never full. It's never full. Usually it's one or two people.
Could we downsize to a smaller vehicle to save money?
That's another question we can ask.
How about a van? That's an eight passenger versus?
Well, really, it's the overhead, you know, it's the people driving, it's the maintenance, you know, it's, and those vans are paid for.
Yeah.
So.
All right. We're trying, folks, to get the cost down. It's all in our tax bill. All right.
The man has some work to do.
I'm sure he's, thank you. All right. We are done with the opening of the public hearing. So do I have a motion? Staff's recommendation here?
I'll reluctantly second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scripner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It's a four zero vote to adopt a resolution finding that there are no unmet transit needs that are reasonable to meet within the city.
Thank you. Item number 10. Airport.
Mayor Smith, I need to recuse myself because I'm currently the chairman of the board of the Air Pollution, Eastern Kern Air Pollution Control District.
All right. So Ashley, our airport manager?
All right. Good evening. General mayor and council members, in late 2020, the Tehachapi Airport partnered with and received a grant from the Eastern Kern Air Pollution Control District to mitigate dust being pushed into neighborhoods adjacent to the airport from both aircraft and the often strong winds in Tehachapi. Our Public Works Department applied the product to approximately 20 acres of the airport, and we had great success with that. So we've applied for the grant again. We've also requested additional funding to apply a denser layer to the east side of the airport, which has the Kern County helicopter maintenance facility, so that gets a lot more traffic to it. The product is designed to penetrate the ground, creating a strong, resilient, and flexible surface that can withstand the intensive use of vehicle traffic and environmental conditions. And then, the agreement found in your packet will provide AB 2766 air quality impact funds for 100% of the eligible cost, up to a maximum of $34,097.72. So that's great, that's not any money coming out of any of the coffers on our end. So the recommendation is that you approve the agreement between the city of Tehachapi and the Eastern Kern Air Pollution Control District for the Tehachapi Municipal Airport Dust Mitigation Project, and authorize the city manager and city attorney to sign.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Is there any public comment? Any council members? All right, do I have a motion to approve? As read by title only? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scripner?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It's a three zero vote to approve the agreement between the city of Tehachapi and the Eastern Kern Air Pollution Control District for the Tehachapi Municipal Airport Dust Mitigation Project, and authorize the city manager and city attorney to sign with a recusal from Councilmember Davies.
Thank you. Item number 11, our Public Works Director report.
Clean California Caltrans agreement for Tucker Road. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Smith and council members. This will be short. Back in July of this year, of last year, sorry, the governor designated a new program called California Comeback Plan, and in that plan, he designated $1.1 billion for cleanup of California infrastructure, mostly around roads and throughout the cities and counties of California. This program was designed to remove trash, create jobs, and engage communities to transform road sides into places of public pride. The state California Clean Funds go directly to cities and counties to clean up local streets. And the Public Works Department has engaged with Caltrans, and we've been discussing this program with them, and we've requested to be a part of this program. And specifically for us, what that looks like is cleanup of Highway 202, which is Tucker Road, basically from the exit of Highway 58 to Valley Boulevard. And essentially how this works is that we will use our staff and our equipment, and we will clean up litter along Tucker, and the Caltrans will reimburse us for those costs. So it'll be, we will submit invoice to Caltrans for the actual cost for us to do that work, and they will kind of check and reimburse it. So Public Works Department estimates that it'll be about $36,000 that we will get paid back. The good part is, we're actually doing some of this work already, and what we aren't doing, nobody else is doing. So it'll not only help get us reimbursed for some work that we're currently doing, but it will pay us to basically do the rest of it that needs to be done, so. Staff's recommendation is to authorize the mayor to enter into a maintenance agreement with Caltrans for the city to participate in the Caltrans Clean California Litter Removal Program. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions or comments for the public? Counsel?
You have one.
Oh, come on up, please.
Doesn't 202, sorry, David Butler, the president, doesn't 202 go down in Valley Boulevard in the city, part of the way?
202 extends to the east, just past McDonald's.
Is that, anyone?
Technically, that is included in this program all the way to the city limits on 202.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Any questions or comments from the council?
I just want to say that this is great program, and so thank you for your leadership to make this happen, because this is a great way to keep us whole and keep our community looking good, and so I'm just pleased that it's a fit.
Thank you.
David? I was going to ask if it's only on 202 can we, can we get it on, do we have designation Tehachapi Boulevard as Business 58, or?
I don't think that would qualify now.
What about the Summit interchange?
There is an opportunity to do some additional areas, yes. That would be the on and off ramps there and the interchange at the summit. We discussed that with them. We decided for this first year of the program to kind of just bite off Tucker and make sure that we're able to do the work and that it, it's not too burdensome above us to, to manage the program. There's a lot of documentation that's required, and it's not just, hey, send us a check for $2,000 every, every month. It's, there's a lot of documentation that's required, so I didn't want to really kind of bite off more than we could chew with this to start with.
All right. So if it works, maybe we can expand.
I will say also, Caltrans has gotten much better at cleaning up that interchange at the summit.
With the Lakeham group, is that what it is?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Greg, did you want to?
Wait, wait till he walks away before we ask.
I'm sorry.
Wait, wait till he walks away and then you can turn around for the fifth time.
So Don and I, Don's done a lot of really good work on this, and we've discussed it in great detail. If you look up the word Caltrans in the dictionary, I'm sorry, if you look up the word bureaucracy in the dictionary, you're going to see Caltrans' logo. He is right, though, they're getting better, and we know how to manage Caltrans pretty well, actually. We're good at getting grants, we're good at delivering exactly what they ask for, road and street money. But Highway 58 could be potentially in there, the summit could be potentially in there. But we don't want to spend $36,000 on paper trying to get back our labor component. So we're going to, we're going to do a test this year. I think it's going to work out splendid, actually. And next year, we're going to come back, and I think we're going to expand it greatly. That's the plan, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. All right, do I have a motion on staff's recommendation?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scripner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a four zero vote to approve the Clean California Maintenance Agreement between Caltrans and the city of Tehachapi for participation in the Clean California Litter Removal Program, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Thank you. And is this a program that's going to be just short-term, and we start doing it, and then they stop funding, or is that?
It's three years to start with.
It's three years. 1.1 billion, did you say, Don?
Yeah. It's not just for litter removal, but this for just beautification across California.
All right. Thank you. Jay, good evening.
Very good. Honorable mayor, council members, the first item I have for you tonight is the Snyder Avenue Road Rehabilitation Project Notice of Completion. As you all will recall, we entered into a contract with R.C. Becker &amp; Sons for the construction of the rehabilitation project. Just to differentiate, this is the paving of Snyder. This was not the curb gutter sidewalk and intersection improvements. This is, this is the fresh pavement out there. If you'll recall, we had two pots of money that we combined to get that project done. We completed a walkthrough and determined that the project is complete, and so notice of completion is in order at this time. And therefore, I recommend you approve the notice of completion for the Snyder Avenue Road Rehabilitation Project, and direct staff to record the same. And so, yeah, the limits were Tehachapi Boulevard to Valley Boulevard, and we think it looks great.
Yes.
That concludes my report.
Any questions or comments? Or congratulations, or anything from the audience for the council?
Really looks good, Jay. Especially the alleyways, entrances, alleyways.
If only we could get the alleys done.
Yeah, I know.
We're still thinking about it, so, thank you.
It is with so many schools right there, it was really critical that that was everybody, that the roadways were clear where you were supposed to drive and where everything was. So thank you for, I've met a few kids.
Thank you. Yeah, the street intersection there always bothered me, you know, just because it kind of was chaos naturally, and so by bolting out that one corner of the intersection, we feel like it's a lot more visible, slows everyone down in a better part, so.
Much, thank you. Any other comments?
I'll make a motion as presented.
All right.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scripner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a four zero vote to approve the notice of completion for the Snyder Avenue Road Rehabilitation Project, and direct staff to record the same.
All right. Item number 15.
Very good, thank you. The second item I have for you tonight is annexation number one into the Community Facilities District number 2017-1 Public Services. So I'll decode this. This is, process is very similar to what you all helped me with a few months ago for the annexation of a few properties into our Landscape and Lighting District. The difference here is the Community Facilities District is a type of funding mechanism that is under the Melrose Community Facilities District law. That's the overarching, I don't know if it's federal or state law, that entitles that type of process. But functionally, what's occurring here is new developments in the city of Tehachapi are being required to annex themselves into the Community Facilities District that was created when Walmart was built. That CFD provides additional funding, unrestricted general tax funding principally, though, for road maintenance and for policing services, which are hard to fund these days. Those are, those are expensive services to provide. And so we've been looking at these larger developments that have been coming to the city and annexing and expecting them to be annexed in so that those new residents that are coming to town in these residential developments will pay their fair share and will pay for that extra incremental effort required for us to maintain those roads and provide that policing services. So this is the first time that this is taking place. This is annexation number one. The project in question here is the Address subdivision located at the corner of Highline and Tucker. That's the 238 lot development, tentative tract map number 7363, and the developers comprehend and copy nature, if you guys remember, you approved that project. So this is a two-step process. Tonight, we'll be declaring our intention to annex them into the CFD, and also tonight, we'll be setting the hearing date of April 18th for the balloting ballots to be opened and for the decision to be made whether or not to put those properties into that CFD. So that's the overarching item. I'll just kind of skip through. That's the background for you all. We hired Willdan Services to provide this work. They created the initial CFD. Thankfully, at the time that we created the original CFD, we thought ahead to this possibility. And so the CFD was formed so that more than just commercial businesses could be annexed into it. And so there is a metric and a math that goes into what residential or multifamily subdivisions would pay if they were annexed into the district. And so that was originally adopted in 2017, and that's why it was named the CFD number 2017-1, very creative, I know. Anyway, so, anyway, the resolution of intention tonight is the first step in the process of annexing these projects into the CFD. This will be our first annexation, and again, it establishes April 18th as the date for the public hearing. And then the way this works, just so you all know, because some CFDs work in different ways, this one is a post-construction addition to the tax rule, meaning that this assessment does not hit the property until the property improves. And so that's, that's critical, because if it hits the property before the property improves, sometimes properties, they stop paying the taxes, and these CFDs can go upside down. That's sort of the story of California City, if you ever wanted. But these don't, these work in opposite. There will be no additional assessment on these properties until the land subdivides and until the individual lots are improved and a home is constructed and the home is completed, and then in the following year, that taxation begins. So in this case, you don't have the situation where you have an undervalued piece of property with, with taxes that are out of compliance. So hopefully that helps reassure you. We think this is an excellent program for dealing with some of the challenges of funding, in particular policing and road services. So my proposal tonight is to initiate proceedings to annex the project into the Community Facilities District, and I recommend that the council declare its intent to annex into the CFD pursuant to the terms and provisions of the Melrose Community Facilities Act of 1982, Chapter 2.5, Part 1, Division 2, Title 5, and Government Code of the State of California as amended for the purpose of financing landscaping, street maintenance, and public services. Formally, my recommendation is that you adopt a resolution in the city council of the city of Tehachapi declaring its intention to annex territory tract map number 7363 to a Community Facilities District and to authorize the levy of special taxes therein, the city of Tehachapi Community Facilities District number 2017-1 Public Services, Annexation Number One. So happy to answer, it's a complex issue, happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have a question, just what we're doing, or, or any comments? All right, does the council? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve as read by title only?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scripner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a four zero vote to adopt a resolution as read by title only.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Jay. City managers report. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Mayor Smith, we talk about grants a lot, and so I wanted to congratulate the city, specifically Jay's Development Services Department, Andrew, Denise, Key. Many people worked on this project, Chief Crager, many, many people, but we received a $2.1 million, rounding it up a little, to build a park on Valley Boulevard, as the press release, and I talked to you about it. But just really excited about this neighborhood park, if you will, for the children of that area. Super excited about the design and the engineering and the construction, and I think the community involvement as we move forward. So it's going to be a great project, so congratulations to everybody, and thank you to everybody that worked on that. Also, wanted to let the council and the public know, we have another grant opportunity, ATP, which is an acronym for Active Transportation Projects. Mayor Smith, you're very familiar with this. It's walking and biking paths, and so maybe sidewalks, maybe bike paths, maybe, you know, ramps, those sorts of things. So on 30 March, 30 March, in this room, at 5:00 PM, we'll be hosting a workshop. So if you have an idea in someplace in the city that you think could use a walk bath or a sidewalk of sorts, please come to the workshop. If you can't attend the workshop, give us a call, send us a text, send us an email, send us a letter. You are the citizens of the eyes and the ears, of course, of the community. They see the children walking to and from school, or to and from parks, maybe, and so we want to incorporate those into our next ATP grant application. So 30 March in this room, 5:00 PM, or call Jay or Key, and we would love to talk to you about those opportunities. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember reports. Christina, anything?
Nothing for me.
Michael?
Nothing for me, sir.
Susan? All right. Very good. Thank you all for coming. We're going to go into closed session for two items. If there's anything that we need to report, any action taken, we'll come back and announce it after we're done. Thank you very much.